I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have someone signed up for citizens to be heard. Jatin Bata, do you want to talk?
It's going to go to that.
All right. Consent agenda items, we have six. No, sorry, I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself again.
Actually, only two.
Motion approved.
Motion made and seconded, Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number four, discuss.
Three, I believe.
Pardon? Oh. Discuss, approve, disapprove, or a general election to be held November 3rd. That's something we do every election year, right?
Motion to approve.
Motion made?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discuss, option approved, options approved by the state Texas Department of Emergency Management for the Future of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Project 4332-017 Fulton Beach Road Shoreline Resiliency. John?
We talked about this for a while.
Is that mic on?
Yeah.
We talked about this like three weeks in a row now. We've met with Tedom. Tedom has presented us options to move forward or hand this project over to another entity, move forward as the project has originally designed and approved, and/or put it on a shelf. So, item number five is the correspondence that Tedom suggests that we send out to the three entities. Correct. Exactly.
Don't have a quick question on that particular project. Are there any matching funds for that?
Yes, there are. It's about our portion, which is 25% of the 25%, is 193,000.
So, it'd be how much?
193,000.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on item number four? Ms. Russo, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to be sure that the options were identified. Thank you.
So, what we're proposing to do today is just send the letters out to the other entities to explore what can happen with maybe a handoff?
Yes. 30 days.
We did receive a letter from the Navigation District Friday afternoon with some requests for information. Of course, it's public knowledge, public information, so that will be sent to them, but this will be sent out to all three entities. Navigation District having the smallest amount of real estate involved in this mitigation. I think we need to hear from the other two also. So, motion.
Motion approved.
Motion made?
Just discussion of an option here.
Is this discussion of both options or just an option?
We're offering them all, we're offering them the three options.
Three options.
Okay. Okay, I'll say.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Judge, this isn't really action item. It's stealth.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Were we talking about number five?
We're talking about number five.
Number five, okay. Sorry.
All right. Do I have unanimous vote or what?
Yes.
Yes.
It seemed like that you just did one.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, community development block grant mitigation project and processes espoused. Good morning.
You could put the PowerPoint up. This is just an update. If you recall, probably about a month ago or so, we did, well, we've been doing ongoing presentations. We've done a couple of presentations so far on the CDBG mitigation program and the things that we're looking at. And we promised at that time that we would continue to put this on the agenda and keep you apprised as to the direction that we're going on those projects. And of course, ultimately, we'll have a public hearing and citizen participation plan, and all of that will happen before you make a final decision on what applications you'll Thank you. Just as a reminder, we've had a lot of different projects that we've been working on. Public Assistance was a 90-10 project. Hazard mitigation was a 75-25. The CDBG DR was 100%. In this particular case, the posting is for 100% grant. When you dig deep into the project, and you'll find this, and we're going to talk about this on another agenda item as well, we're now getting into the situation where most of the grants that we're looking at now are competitive grants. And CDBG MIT has a two-component process. One is a statewide regional, and we're going to talk about those projects. The statewide region, and we will also talk about a second portion, which is what's called the method of distribution. And that is funding that is filtering authorization through our council of governments, and that would be a specified amount, and there shouldn't be any, we haven't seen the rules yet, but there should, the overall action plan that was published by HUD indicates that there's not any matching requirements. So, and those rules shouldn't be changing. But I did want to note that on the regional competition, as we've delved into the application and evaluation of projects, there is a scoring criteria that if a community presents 1% match, that there's points associated with that. And it's going to be very competitive. They're going to probably have two or three times the amount of applications that they have money. So, that's going to matter in our application.
What type of projects are we talking about?
That's what I'm going to, yes, sir. So, on the statewide regional competition, we can put up to three partnering projects, and we can also put in three single projects. And what we're, the indications that we're getting is based upon the availability of money, we're only likely to get one, maybe one in each category. It's, they say it's possible for two, but given what the competition levels are going to be, and probably some of the big projects that areas like Houston are going to put in, it's going to eat up the money pretty quickly. Next.
Kim, is, or is this money that's still from Harvey, or is this, we're moving back to normal CDBG-type stuff?
It's, it is a special allocation that was done, the $4 billion last allocation, but it's not specifically tied to Harvey. It's for all mitigation for all communities that are affected.
So, it's allowing us to get back into what would normally be, would normally be competition for grants again?
Correct.
Okay.
Next slide, please.
We're about to get to the end of the Harvey stuff.
We are. Now, this is a more generous grant. Normally, what you get on grants is anywhere from, usually, they want 25, 20 to 25%. This is still not that. It's the 1%. So, the statewide competition, the things that we're looking at is we're still looking at the fiber optic loop, which would be a multi-jurisdictional, maybe about four different communities that would be impacted, and we are looking at that very strongly. We received a request from Aransas Pass to partner with them on some road drainage and sewer projects. They would be coming up with their 1% match, and they have committed to that if they, if we partner with them. We're still having to look at the overall picture to see if it's to our advantage to partner or not. And our ultimate recommendation will reflect that, depending on what the likelihood, how good of projects we have, how competitive they are with partnering versus going alone, on our own. And Aransas Pass is aware of that. We're having good conversations about that, and that's their opinion as well. And then the third regional project that we're looking at is some drainage and roads, and potentially, possibly, some sewer along with that. I have, we're looking at trying to find a very large clustered area that meets all the LMI requirements. David Reed, we're working very closely with David on identifying that. In addition to those areas, there's several other areas we're looking at, including Ruby Allen, which is, seems to be rising to the top at this point. That requires the one, all of these require the 1% match. In the case of this large road and drainage projects that we would do, we have the matching funds in the drainage fund in order to do that. So, you know, if you did a $20 million project, that would be $200,000 match. It's not likely that we're going to get that high as far as the project goes. We're looking for something low-hanging fruit, contiguous, major impact project. So, those are right there, what we're looking at as a possibility for the statewide and the possibility of doing partner projects and/or single projects. Those bottom two could either be a partnership, or it could be going alone. And then, of course, that middle one with Aransas Pass, if we go alone, that goes off the slide. Next slide. So, I mentioned the allocation that's accomplished through the COG, and that's called the Regional Method of Distribution. That has not happened. The distribution is not, they're telling us, and I've asked multiple times, they're indicating to us that we will probably find out our allocation, which is very similar, though use a different methodology or formula, but it's very similar to what you got in your original CDBG DR. They provided an allocation. In that case, we did fare very well, and it was a $154 million allocation. We don't anticipate that allocation is going to be of that order of magnitude by any means, and our list is reflective of that. So, what we're looking at right now, and the application won't be due till sometime in the fall, or maybe after the beginning of the year, we've got the Fulton Beach Road Extension, which is only the county section, so not any other jurisdiction section, just the county section, that's 6.7 million. There's Newcom Point, that's 2.7, which, that would have to be a $3 million project in order to qualify. There's a $3 million threshold for applications in this category. We also have almost $4 million of mitigation projects for out at the airport. And then, generators are in the 3 million range. We have some additional work that could and needs to be done in the Linden Street area, and we're reserving that, we're keeping that up for discussion this fall, depending on how that project works out. And we have found that the Hurricane Dome is probably not likely going to be competitive or eligible for these funds. So, we're not going to be able to go for that. But that's the working list right now. Yes, sir.
On the Harden School generators, the 3 million there, if we're, if there is a match, there's the school district going to do the match, or we doing it?
So, on this, this is not the competition round, and so there's not, the scoring doesn't apply, and it's, the match is only coming up under the competition and the scoring. So, as of right now, based on what's published by HUD and by the GLO, there wouldn't be any matching funds for this particular category, only for that last slide with the fiber optic and the sewer, excuse me, drainage and roads. Next slide. So, there are some other things that I just wanted to talk about a little bit. It's not, it's the overall picture of the mitigation infrastructure in our community, but it's not county projects. But I wanted to, and I did invite the other jurisdictions to come and talk about what their plans are. The Navigation District may have someone. I also invited Fulton and Rockport, but I'm not sure that they're here today, but we can, we can ask. But there are several things. There's the other portions of the Fulton Beach Road Extension. That's in the Navigation District and also Fulton's jurisdiction. That's about 8,000 square feet and a $13 million project.
8,334 linear feet.
Excuse me, linear feet. (laughing).
Kim, these numbers on that particular one and then the one down Little Bay dredging, did those come directly from the Nav District?
No, those are, John can maybe talk about, see, these projects, some of these projects have been out on lists, in fact, just to roll back to like the generators and Newcom Point. Those were on, those are unmet needs that happened that we turned into Tedom and FEMA, and they didn't get funded because they ran out of money. So, we're recycling those with our, this last chance for funding.
The source of the information, where did you get that?
I worked it out through the district.
Not from the Nav District, though? So, they're not showing that they need $5 million for shoreline or for Little Bay dredging?
So, I have corresponded multiple times, made attempts to get information from all the different entities about what their projects are, because we don't want overlap, and you know, there's jurisdictional issues and all of that. I have not received anything from them, and that's why I invited them here today, because I thought it would be beneficial for the Commissioners Court to kind of get a feel for what else is happening in the community for protection. These projects here are projects that we're aware of, there are needs in the community, but aren't our jurisdiction, and so we just kind of want to put it out there, and hopefully we'll be able to get some more feedback. I do know that the Navigation District is planning on for this statewide competition. They are asking for bulkheads for Cove Harbor, for the Rockport Harbor, and also Fulton Beach Road. So, that's three bulkhead projects, and they're going statewide competition. There is also, that's for the Navigation District.
But Fulton Beach Road never?
Only, only bulkheads. They are not, they've, they've got two projects. One is for the bulkheads for Cove Harbor, Rockport Harbor, and Fulton Harbor. So, that's one, and that's, that's a big project, multi, they're going to go for the statewide competition money for that. They also indicated that they're going to go for one more project, which is some type of project with Key Allegro for resiliency and shoreline, and they didn't give me specifics about that, but apparently, they've been working with the association on trying to put together a project for that. When I inquired about this allocation of money, this mod, I'm not sure that Fulton was aware that they were probably going to get an allocation and that they're eligible, so we had some conversations about that. I don't know what Rockport's intent is for it, and I did talk to the Nav District, and I don't think that they've, from what I can tell, have not worked on what they want to try to, what projects they want to do under the mod. And this time, it's our understanding that they are going to be eligible for funding, that they're an eligible entity.
Kim, I don't, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I kind of feel like if Fulton, Rockport, and Nav District, if they're not soliciting us to look for things to work jointly with, I think we should concentrate on projects that are solely ours.
That's what I'm telling you. We are not working on any multi-jurisdictional projects.
But you did indicate that they're going out for grant funding to take care of maintenance, bulkheads, whatnot, in South Cove.
Yeah, and that's their independent, and its new installation of bulkheads, I believe, not maintenance, but I don't know that. I just know that they are applying for funding, statewide competition funding for bulkheads for those three areas.
How much money?
They didn't give that information.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So, yes, just to be clear, because, you know, area of interest in what you're saying, Commissioner, this list says other jurisdictions that we're not partnering with. It's just a list of we're aware that there's community needs out there, and it's not our jurisdiction, and we're not dealing with it. And, and that's part of it, is just clear transparency to make sure that everybody knows that's not, that's not in our basket. It's in somebody else's basket, and if it's going to happen, then they need to be talking about that, if they, if they agree that that's a need. So, anyway, and that, that's why I invited everybody here today, so that, you know, we could compare notes and just be aware of whatever, have the context of knowing what everyone is doing. So, for instance, there's, you know, needs in, on Water Street. Water Street is a hard project, so is Austin Street, because it doesn't meet LMI, and so you have to be able to combine that with other projects, because it still has the 51% low-mod income requirement for, for projects.
What is the projected cost on that? Do you have an?
The, what we have on file is about 4 million, I believe. Okay.
Three, oh, 6 million. Million here, million there.
Yeah. Depends on scoping. The project that y'all talked about earlier, that we're not, you know, that y'all are sending the letter for, Fulton Beach Road, that is an eligible project under this funding that other entities could apply for. And then, of course, we've got Little Bay dredging that's out there for 5 million.
Yeah, that was the number I was asking about. That's a hard number, 5 million dredging. Did that come from the Nav District? I'm just trying to figure out where it came from.
Yeah. And so, if, I did provide a spot here for coordination with entities or dialogue with the, but I don't know if anybody's here from any of the other entities.
The Nav District is going for the Little Bay dredging, not us.
What I'm saying is it's an unmet need, and no one that I'm aware of has taken ownership of that and is going to be doing that project, although that's in their jurisdiction to do that.
Kim, in some of the earlier presentations from the GLO and others, they talked about being able to share projects with other entities that had low LMI areas in there. I'm kind of curious on the, on the project that you talked about that's in this county, but in Aransas Pass. That's probably a real heavily LMI area that's in the county.
Yes. And that's why we're looking at it really hard to see if putting it together, but you also have to be able, there's some other criteria that comes into place, so you have to show the common beneficiaries. And so, there's a whole bunch of different criteria that you're trying to balance, and that, that question about whether we can put projects together geographically close enough, drainage basin close enough, they have to look at that and see if that helps everyone or if it hurts everyone. And, and so, that's what the consultants are going to be doing for us. They have their grant administrator, we have ours, but we're all working together to explore that, and as soon as we know whether it'll be more beneficial. The other thing you have to keep in mind, Colin, if you wouldn't mind going back to that second slide, third slide.
While you're doing that, that particular area where they're doing that is, is high LMI.
One more forward.
Yeah, one of the deals, and one of these previous things, they, it was kind of a strange deal that they talked about, that you could have, we could have an area that wasn't LMI. They could have an area that was totally LMI. You could, what appeared to be, you could have two grants, and you could marry them together, and the non-LMI area could use their numbers to help you get the grant. It was a real strange deal, surprising when they brought that up.
It, it is, but when you start digging down, it gets down to that question of whether we can defend that it's the same beneficiary group, and whether you can cobble together things that aren't geographically connected. And that's why we're studying and looking to see, you know, is there something that's strategic that we can do together? The other thing, and I've, I've been very clear about this in, in talking with Aransas Pass, if we're only going to get one partnership project and one individual project, hopefully, and that's not guaranteed by any means, then we have, when we partner with Aransas Pass, it puts it in competition against the fiber optic loop. Whereas, if we keep it separate, it's in its own competition category. So, it's a matter of juggling all of our goals and trying to be most strategic about our applications. And that's what we're going through right now. What I, what we're trying to accomplish today is just to make sure that we're going in the right direction. It is pound the pavement time right now. We're really hard hitting on the projects and looking at all these factors, and then we'll, you know, have to put cost estimates and the application together. And so, that's why we just want to make sure that we're heading in the right direction with projects that we're doing.
I don't know if it's included in some of those descriptions that they have up there, but one of the biggest things that we need in every precinct in the city in Fulton is drainage through state highways.
Absolutely.
That's, that's probably, if we, as much money as we could get, we could spend on that to benefit drainage in every part of the county.
And to be quite honest with you, to be quite honest with you, our drainage plans are incomplete until it's done, because we have, we have easements on both sides of 17, on 1069, but we have a hard time getting them from, from the east side to the west side. And Commissioner Cashline's 100% correct that that's not being addressed, that can be addressed, that needs to be addressed.
We'll definitely look at it, see if we can justify it, see if we can justify it with the LMI. We had some changes in the LMI. You know, they've updated some of the maps, and originally, if you'll recall, we've got some work, about 5 million, I think, that we're doing over in Holiday Beach. That doesn't qualify anymore. Neither does Lamar. It's no longer an LMI area. So, it's kind of interesting trying to create that web of, of that. Now, we can do some surveying, but surveying takes a lot of time, and it's harder to do now with COVID and everything, but that's always still an option as well. Yes, sir.
All right. You know, for the sake of some people out there that don't know. All right. You know, for the sake of some people out there that don't understand what LMI is and who determines that, could you just touch on that for a second?
It's it's census data. And there's a there's something that it's American Community Survey that's done more frequently that kind of updates some of that information. But but it's basically survey data that's done through the Census Bureau that identifies what percent of low mod income as those numbers are established are in a particular area. So they establish low mod income statistics for countywide. And we do not. Some counties automatically, they have over 51% low mod income in the county. So they don't even have to go through, you know, justifying different areas. The whole county qualifies. In this case, we do not qualify for the 50% of low mod income. And so we're having to go through census block group, which are designated areas. And that's really, I'm going to use a technical term funky when you get down in the coastal areas. Because, you know, as you know, there's not, it a lot of the outcomes on the census don't make sense to you intuitively. So for instance, the second homes. So there may be an area that comes across as fairly wealthy, but it comes out as low mod income because they're not looking at the second home owners or vacation home owners. They're only looking at the permanent residents there. And so you may have a large area that you're looking at half a dozen homes or something. They're actually dictating what the low mod income is. And that's why a lot of times you have to go into those kind of areas and do surveying. But we do have several census block groups that do meet that low income requirement.
How is low to moderate income defined? I know you've told us, but I can't get it.
Yeah, it's by HUD. It's by HUD. They do calculations.
Compared to nationwide or compared to countywide or what?
It's nationwide.
And it's some percentage?
Do you not know? They have a a formula that they use and it's updated.
Just put it in sharper terms that some someone like me can understand. This is the federal government saying we're going to help you take care of some of your hazard down there. But we're not going to really do it in areas where you've got more wealthy landowners. We're going to, you're going to have to do it in lower income areas in order to qualify for. That's a very simple concept. It's some more social engineering coming out of on hazard mitigation, I might add.
And it absolutely doesn't make any sense at all. And one of the issues that's driving that.
Doesn't have to make sense.
One of the issues that drives that is Congress gives the money to HUD. And that's their main, that's their main objective. And so when they write the rules, that's why they start inserting those objectives when that not wasn't necessarily what our representatives and senators were had in mind.
Voted the money in Congress, turn it over to the bureaucrats sitting in a room, haven't ever been out there. I don't think any of them ever come to our county judge. Have you ever seen any?
I've never seen any.
And they tell us, these are the rules that you're going to have to go by. So there's where the social engineering comes in. I don't like the system on Iota, but I can't do anything about it.
Well, and and whenever they designate low to mod, as I understand it, it's by region. That the United States is like seven regions or something like that. And it because if if you looked at low to mod and you looked at some areas in California or back east, everything low to mod there is, you know, millions and and it would be great for us if they did that, but don't do that. Anyway, Mr. Benson's property might just barely make it.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, sir. So we'll bring this back to you for, you know, final after we've really done the technical reviews that we need to.
You had your name down. Wanted to say something?
I did. I just wanted to be sure that the projects that they were presenting were clearly delineated, which they have been. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Judge, I'd make a motion to approve.
Report. Second. Motion made and seconded by Commissioner Cashline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss, approve, disapprove resolution R 35 2020 to adopt Texas Department of Transportation Standards specifications and quality assurance requirements for all county transportation infrastructure fund grant program projects.
Mr. Reed, one quick question. Are they going to abide by these same standards?
What day is it?
We we do use textile standards for all our projects.
Yeah, but is textile abiding by the standard, particularly as they as they relate to drainage? Yes or no? I mean.
Probably. I don't I don't audit what Techside's doing, but they do have their standards. They're good standards. We we follow them anyway.
Commissioners here that they actually have created drainage problems for us when they build their projects in our county.
I think that's probably a engineering problem, not a standard problem. But yeah.
Yeah. And so some of these problems were were created by growth and not by original road design.
Correct.
But we need, we need the standards to be changed so that we can change the road design.
Well, we're trying to get some tech stop money. These are their standards. We follow them. We should.
Second. Motion made and seconded, Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we can we partner with Techstop and get better better readings?
All right. Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorize, county judge to sign a contract for appraisal services from Transador on Rockport Center for Arts Parking Lot.
Skip number eight.
Did I skip it? Skip that because I marked it as already done. Sorry about that. Discuss, approve, disapprove, resolution R 34 2020 of resolution authorizing selection and award of professional engineering services contract to Strand Associates, McDonald and LNV for various community development block mitigation programs supplemented by hazard mitigation program administered by General Land Office. Okay. Kim, you're back on board.
Thank you, sir. As you recall, in at our last meeting, staff came forward with a recommendation to award the professional services contract to Strand Associates. And at that time, the Commissioners Court expressed that you would like to award to multiple engineers due to concerns about workload of just one engineering group. So staff went back and explored that idea. And of course, it's it's quite possible and it is recommended that we do award to three vendors today. But I did want to note that what we would like to recommend is that we do that award, but not pursue the contracts yet and not move forward with contracts because it's very premature. As you can see, we have a lot of moving targets about what kind of projects that we want to do. It's very difficult right now to assign different projects to to the different engineers because we don't know what we're going to get awarded and we don't know what our allocation is going to be over for the method of distribution under the CDBG MIT program. So what we're recommending is to select the vendors. We'll work diligently to put together our projects and try to get more information. And then when we have a better feel for what kind of projects are going to be moving forward, it would be at that time that we would move forward with the negotiations of the contract and a signing of projects.
If we got a project and if everything goes, then then we would look to see which engineer we felt was better able to do that, or we would we just put it to those three engineers?
It would be, it would be the three that you select now. And we do have a need for engineering services right now in order to develop the grant applications. And what we're recommending is that we do what we did before with the CDBG MIT program. We were signing potentially a contract today with Tetra Tech for our grant administration services. When they did that bid, they included engineering services for for preparation of the grant application. That you have to have a seal on all of the projects that you submit. So what we're recommending is that we work through that that particular contract to get the minimal engineering that's necessary in order to submit the applications. And then later, when the when the big contracts and money comes forward, then we would bring it forth again to you with our recommendations on the distribution.
So this does a couple of things for us. It lets us have a smaller pool of engineers that we can go to that should shorten the amount of requests or proposals. And it allows us to say, okay, well, they're really good at this, or they're good at that, or they're good at that. So it should save us some time in our in our grant preparation.
Yes, you won't have to go through the RFQ process before this was a valid process. And you would be, you know, selecting your vendors based upon that process, but then we'll do our follow up contracting.
That was my question. Each of these three were verified going through the procurement process. Let's lead out for.
Yes, sir.
They're qualified. Thank you.
So I think, I mean, we heard last week from David Reed, you just wanted to make sure you had or and Commissioner Castor line that there were enough engineers to do the work. Do either of you have any trouble with Tetra Tech doing the administration grant preliminary engineering part?
I did coordinate twice with David to make sure he was good with this approach.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Second, Commissioner Cashline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorize, county judge to sign a contract with appraisal services for Transador on the Rockport Center for the Arts Parking Lot Site. Facility included in the CBD PR.
Move to approve.
I got a question, Judge, I would second, but a question. Who's paying for the for the services?
John? Jack?
Comes from the grant.
The grant?
Yes.
This was going to cause no cost to the county.
No, no, it's in the grant administration. Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing, reducing the Economic Development Administration grant application 35, $3.5 million from $4.5 million and authorizing a grant matching funds of $350,000. This has done some changing in the last two days of last week. So probably won't have any action on that, but maybe a little discussion. So do it. I have a, I guess we need a motion to second to discuss.
Make a motion for the discussion.
Second. Okay, now let's discuss it.
All right. Yes, and I apologize. It did come on the agenda quite quickly because I thought that we, it was my understanding that we were on a deadline. The original situation was this this grant was going to be evaluated the week of the 24th. And we were not going to have another commission meeting before that time when it was going to be under consideration. Since then, I've gotten some more information I'll talk about, and that's why we don't need any action today. But just kind of briefly, brief history on this. We became aware of this particular grant in the probably April timeframe. Generally, it was brought to our attention by the Innovation Center in Corpus Christi and that this project would be a really good match for a EDA project. In when we started exploring the project, of course, we read the notice of funding opportunities. We had been advised verbally from the Innovation Center that we could apply for up to 100% grant, which is a true statement. If you go and look at the notice of funding opportunity, it is posted that it's an 80 to 100% grant, still is posted that way. When we coordinated with the regional direct statewide regional director, he also confirmed that they were taking applications up to 100% with no match. So we've been working. What ended up happening is we turned in, we did a lot of coordination in advance with the EDA and the representatives, both in the local, regional and statewide, multi-state, regional. The committee completed its work and we turned in an application on July 31st. I received a phone call last week from our regional EDA, local regional EDA individual. And what he advised me is this has been a very, very competitive process and that they're really trying to spread the money around a lot. And what he said was, is our grant application was too high. We were asking for too much money that we were outside of what other communities were proposing. And that he was requesting if we wanted to resubmit our application at a lower amount in order to get competitive. He also indicated that all of the applications that they were receiving did indeed provide matching funds. So we started working on that, trying to figure out, you know, what we could do. We called back to get some more feedback to the regional rep to get some clarification on, you know, what our targets ought to be. And generally, what they're looking for is grants that are, they prefer 3 million or less and with a 20% match. So because I didn't think we had any time, I put this on the agenda. But we found out subsequent to that, that our application has been temporarily put on the shelf for next month so that we could respond and have a little bit of time to respond. So that's why we have the opportunity to talk about this on the 24th. So what where we're at right now is, again, we don't need any action today. The committee has been meeting very stringently, looking at different possibilities for the building, looking at, they've been doing some very aggressive fundraising. One of the things that we found out as a result of some very extensive discussions with the regional rep is that we can do in kind, both that they're willing to consider, you know, like if a contractor wants to do some services and will make a commitment for it in writing or donate materials, or if the county wants to do what it typically has done in the past, which is called force account work, which is basically in kind contribution from the county, that they will accept all of that. And we've talked kind of about what kind of format that needs to come in. So what I'd like to do at this time, and we had Jatine Bokta sign up so that he could speak. He'd like to provide an update on the committee work and the different things that they're exploring.
Mr. Bokta?
Thank you, Kim. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jatine Bokta. I'm the chairman of the Aransas County Partnership Economic Development Corporation. I would like to begin by presenting to you a resolution of commitment from the Aransas County Partnership EDC for the Team Center project that Kim discussed earlier. Our board approved this resolution earlier this month. You should have a copy in front of you. Just to kind of paraphrase toward the whereas since the Aransas County Partnership Economic Development Corporation has clearly been the driving force and primary stakeholder in all aspects of this proposed center, by this resolution does hereby commit to continue its leadership role as a facilitator, liaison and serve in advisory capacity to Aransas County and Del Mar College and other partners to assist in the establishment and sustainability of the Team Center, Workforce Development and Entrepreneur Center in Aransas County. Again, this was passed earlier by our board. Just I think Kim kind of gave you a lot of the updates. We're looking at multiple options. That's why we kind of want to push this back to the August 24th because of some of the information we've gotten. We're still working on getting private donations like what she mentioned and then alternative uses for the other part of the building as well. So there's multiple conversations being had right now. And so it'd be kind of the the decision wouldn't be as informed as what it should be. So that's why we're hoping that we can come back to you on the 24th with a little more information and a clearer path forward. So.
Are you looking to shrink the project so it'll fit in 3.5 million now instead of 4.5 million? How how are you going to make it less money?
Well, we have the option of just developing one building at the moment. We can grow into the other, you know, so there's that option. There's option of if Del Mar is looking at. the other, you know, so there's that option. There's option of if Del Mar is looking at, you know, what they proposed initially was both buildings, both of them, you know, dissected out to meet the Team Center, all the acronyms that the team stands for. And so we would just kind of consolidate that to a one building and then grow into the second. And that would substantially reduce the cost.
How much do you think that, how's it look like on donations towards the match?
We're probably about two-thirds there. So.
I'm very much in favor of the Team Center, but not in favor of the three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's a steep amount, and we didn't, like Kim had, you know, kind of given you the timeline. I think, you know, initially when Russell Francis with A&amp;M Corpus came to us, you know, it was like a hundred percent match. We're like, yeah, let's do this. And I think everybody in this community, everyone, we've gone in front of the city, the town, the Nav District, and you guys, everybody's for it, school district as well. It's just that what we were dealt with is, hey, it's going to be a hundred percent. Then, of course, we didn't realize the competition that ensued, and now we're dealing with a twenty percent or whatever the match ends up being, so.
But you're not asking the county for money?
No, not at this time. We might have, let's see where this thing leads us, and then on the twenty-fourth, we'll have better numbers, better details. Del Mar is working the, the building layout as well. We're doing construction costs.
Does the school district or the city or town seem to be interested in helping us with the match?
We've had conversation, of course, cities going through their budget, so they're, you know, they're also looking into it. Not sure if the town's going to be able to do much, you know, on that front, and we haven't talked to the town of Fulton. But we have reached out to City of Rockport, see where we can go with that in terms of their match and what they could contribute to it.
So when you say you've raised, I think you said something about two-thirds progress, does that mean you've raised two-thirds of three hundred and fifty thousand in cash from donations?
Mm-hmm. I mean, these are either commitment through in-kind or cash.
Okay.
So one or the other.
Any other questions from Mr. Bokta?
Make the motion to table.
Motion made. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bokta. Discuss, approve, disapprove, authorizing county judge to sign a contract agreement with Tetra Tech for recovering grant program management and administration services for Aransas County various CBD GR mitigation programs administered by the GLO. The contract's ready and been looked at by legal, and it's okay. So do have a motion.
Approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, general discussion on twenty twenty-one budget. Jackie?
I did give y'all a little summary sheet that kind of gives you a background of what is involved in this budget.
This one that shows the change to be nine hundred thousand less?
I'm sorry?
Is this the one that shows the unreserved fund balance to drop by nine hundred and fifty-five thousand?
It actually shows the fund balance to drop by seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Okay. Any notes? Two thousand twenty-one to the end of two thousand twenty-one. Jackie, the seventy-six dollars per day, is that agreed upon number now with the Marsa's office?
Yes, sir. They did come back last week and tell us that they would do the three years. We come back in three years to renegotiate those.
Insurance mark it down.
We will definitely be going north.
Thank you.
Negotiation date.
What number of occupancy did you use and did you feel comfortable with?
We used, it's saying that we have used in the past the nine hundred. It does include all the rent that's for the temporary courthouse and the storage.
What does that amount to?
Right at two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
This does not include any new positions. It does include the positions that were created this year. They are funded, but there are no new positions funded. It also includes the extra pay period that we have, and the, at this point, we have placed a two point five percent COLA across the board in and for working purposes with the officials.
Could somebody please speak to the need for a two percent increase?
It was just something that's gone on around us, so I asked her to go ahead and put it in there. Be taken out just as fast as it was put in there.
Mrs. Swann, would you like to speak to the need for two and a half percent COLA increase? The two and a half percent COLA increase has been proposed in this budget. I'm sorry, what? Yes, I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Need to come up to the mic.
Okay. Sorry, you kind of caught me a little off guard this morning.
You shouldn't have come in.
No, I shouldn't have come in. Yes, I agree. Well, we are very low compared to other entities and counties in the area. We have been losing a lot of employees. They're going to other Ingleside, Portland, things like that without.
Kind of numbers on the loss of personnel.
Huh?
Give me a number. Is it numbers or percentage of turnover?
Off the top of my head, probably about twenty percent.
Twenty percent turnover?
Yeah.
We've lost twenty percent of our staff this year?
It's, it's been extremely high, yes. I do believe a lot of it has to do with COVID. But, yeah.
Didn't we give a two and a half percent last year?
Yes, we did.
Which took effect this year.
Mm-hmm.
And wait, I thought, I thought you were saying we lost twenty percent of staff to non-competitive salaries. How much did we lose to non-competitive salaries, not COVID?
I'd have to run the numbers. I could get you those next week.
You know, that would be good.
Okay.
Most of the commissioners, if not all the commissioners, here representing taxpayers. In my particular, recently, I represent a lot of retired folks, and they're seeming to get by with a one point six percent increase on their social security. So considering the two and a half last year and the two and a half this year, and the social security hasn't come out and said what they're going to do for next year, that just seems to be a little bit higher than is necessary, but that's why I'm asking for the numbers.
Yeah. Well, I do know that two and a half percent usually only averages about twenty-five to thirty-some cents per person per hour increase. If you wanted to look at Ingleside's maintenance, just to take that one per se, they make a dollar an hour more starting pay than we do.
Ingleside. And what is their tax rate down there?
Huh?
What's their tax rate?
I don't know. I haven't looked at that.
Well, we did take one closer to home, like Aransas Pass, it's got a seventy-seven, seventy-seven cent tax rate.
Yeah.
I mean, look, I understand. Although I would point out in the year, this year, that they've received stimulus checks from the government. Those people that have lost their jobs, which is, nobody in the county's lost their job. We didn't lay anybody off that yet.
Nope.
We pay, we have great fringe benefits. I'm surprised that it's high, twenty percent. That's a shocking number.
Well, unemployment has been offering an extra six hundred dollars a month above and beyond what we're paying right now. So any of our employees that leave, we're getting six hundred dollars extra per pay period, per week, to stay on unemployment. I've had six positions that have been open since this thing started that we can't fill.
I would imagine that that's probably a big, big factor.
And that's what I meant by the COVID is affecting us because.
Well, and the rules coming out of the federal government affecting us as well.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And they need to.
And they extended that, too. It was supposed to end at the end of this month, and they extended it.
They're locked in terminal up there in Washington, and now they've actually left town.
And we're not, I mean, we're not seriously going to consider giving people raises just to tempt them back off of unemployment at the county?
Well, we don't have people on unemployment from the county. I'm saying, we're having difficulties filling positions because a number of people are on unemployment, and they're making more than they can make if they come back to work.
But we can't outbid the federal government to entice those people to work.
But it does help. Every little bit helps.
I saw by your office the other day, you've got four positions listed, right? At the sum total of the open positions that we have.
Currently, yes.
Looks like you're having a very tough job replacing a twenty percent turnover.
We as, we as a general rule have always given a COLA increase. So as, over the years, and I've been on the court now, this is my eleventh or twelfth budget, I can't think of a time where we haven't given a COLA increase. And I say that because it seems to become, assume that we're going to do it. This is a real unusual year. And, you know, and I know that all the elected officials are not going to get a pay raise. I don't think the department heads or, you know, anybody in management's probably going to get a, a pay raise. Other, I don't have a problem with keeping up with inflation, but I don't think inflation's even that high right now. I don't know.
Didn't we skip a COLA one year? I'm, I'm trying to, I think last year when we gave it, the, there was some discussion of how we had to skip it the year before. So we do sometimes skip it in times of hardship.
After Harvey was skipped.
After Harvey.
Oh, yes, I forgot.
So in extraordinary circumstances.
We had given one, two, three years.
In extraordinary circumstances, we have a history of skipping COLA when it's, when it's belt tightening time.
I think in the eleven years I've been on the court, we've only had an extraordinary circumstance one time. And I'm not against.
Now, two, counting COVID.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not against anything like that, except it's just a very difficult year for us. And that's the only reason why I would bring anything up on it. It's very difficult.
Okay, Jen. Thank you, Ms. Nunn.
So we don't, we don't need to actually decide on this until at least, what, next week? We're just talking about?
It's just discussion right now. I would need direction from the court so that we can finalize the budget. We are, we have the public hearing scheduled for next week. So some direction from the court would be much appreciated.
And I think you said that the difference to the budget would be, what, several hundred thousand dollars if we skipped COLA?
Yes, ma'am. I can tell you that right.
Well, that's only as it, as it pertains to the general fund impact, right?
Well, to the general fund, yes. It also will reduce any fund balances or increased fund balances back in Roden Bridge because there's salaries in Roden Bridge, transfer station, airport, all the other departments that do.
But the total impact would be closer to probably what?
The total impact is, let me tell you what, the impact to the general fund would be right at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And how much total impact?
Total impact.
Countywide.
Let me give you that total. Let me get some things down here. Total impact with no COLA is, this includes all the new salaries, all the, the extra pay period. I'm going to get to the bottom of the page here. It's two hundred and sixty, oh, it's four hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. If we did the COLA, it's seven hundred and forty-seven, so it's right at three hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars effect on the salary, and that's across all departments.
And that, so that's not two thirty plus three ten, that's total three ten?
Exactly. The majority of it is in general fund, but it does also affect the other department.
What kind of general direction are you looking for today?
To recalculate it for us so that we see one?
If y'all are interested in giving the COLA, I mean, I would like to know, not necessarily today, but this week, so that I can have some.
Can't really give it to you.
Sheriff, you've got two of the departments that are most affected. You want to speak to it?
Actually, I have asked. So right on this, I can give you nine to four people that are in Portland today that worked with me a year ago. I can give you two that are in Ingleside, you lost one to Aransas. And in consideration of the total impact, I would ask that we take out the overtime that I'm carrying to jail to meet mandates heading because at one point this year, we were down six employees.
Were down what?
We were down six employees at one time. And so we brought in overtime to adjust and meet state mandates for heading.
Was that?
That is an impact on the budget. You're reminding that I go through the cycle repeatedly.
Is that, was the six people that you were down, is that all due the fact that they had left?
Yes, it was.
So these weren't people that were off because they were sick, or?
No, that's vacancies that we were out.
Vacancies, okay. Posted opening?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Judge, I didn't sign up for this, but may I speak?
Certainly.
I'm Pat Russo. I was former human resource director here at the county. There have been a few occasions where we did not give COLAs, and I can't pull those out of my head. But I know if you went to the folder of an employee who'd been here for ten years, you could easily see on their personnel record where a COLA wasn't awarded because we update that every year. So there is that history at times when the finances haven't been such that allowed it. And then the figure that Jackie gave of what the impact would be as far as salaries, I just would like to remind you, as you well know, that also impacts all of the taxes you pay and what you put into the retirement, and what you pay on workers' comp, and what you pay on unemployment, because all of that is based on salary. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Those are in these numbers.
Okay, that's in the numbers. I would assume.
Yes, sir. They are all anticipated in those numbers.
Well, one approach we could consider is if, if there are departments that are particularly struggling to deal with the extra costs of losing staff, like the jail, you know, we could adjust the budget of the jail without giving a county-wide COLA.
And then sheriff department also.
The whole sheriff's department, I should say.
Well.
Any hopes on the way, Sheriff? I hear a lot of cities are defunding their.
That your, that your poll over?
No.
I will also add that we anticipate the unencumbered fund balance at the end of this year to be around six point six million. And with the two and a half percent COLA, anticipated to be about one point, or six point one million to end the year. We traditionally amend the budgeting into the fund balance. We have always put money back in. Everybody is very frugal and conservative, and they don't overspend or spend it just because it's there. So we have historically always put money back into fund balance and not gone into the.
You know, just to play devil's advocate on the other side, with the change in requirements on property tax increases, we're going to have to live with a three and a half percent increase in the future. That's fine, as long as our assessed values are going up. It does help us. I can, we have a nine percent increase in assessed values this year, which allowed us to hold a new new tax revenue and still come out with semi, a semi balanced budget. But I would point out, from the beginning of the year to the end of next year, based on these numbers, we would have reduced our general fund balance from six point nine to up to six point one. And that's even taking the benefit of rise in assessed value.
Yes, sir.
We can't do this forever going forward. I'm just making that point. By the way, I won't be here to remind you of that next year at this time. But I, I'm concerned about the controlling of our costs going forward and having to live with what state mandates is our ability to do. I don't know what we can do with general direction. It's a general discussion right here. It's not an action item.
Yes, sir. It's not an action item. But I just, if you could just give me some direction.
Budget timetable, you need some sort of decisions by the end of this week.
Basically, be similar, this would be similar to the workshop where you would just give me some direction on what you want to see in it. It's not action on what's actually, I mean, I guess I'm going to refer that to Kristin if it's actually.
Under the upper minutes, I can't do a walking corner for you.
I don't, I'm not asking for a walking corner.
Can you, Jackie, can, can you present us with, you know, a bifurcated option next week? So we'll see, next, I mean, if we, if we can't decide today, but we do have to decide by next week, if we see what the both options are, we'll choose one when we're, when we do have an action item. when we do have an action item.
Okay, you're saying nothing or?
In other words, show us with COLA, without COLA.
Well, worst case scenario is $310,000 if we do the 2.5, or not necessarily worst case, but.
Right, but, but i- if we want to, if we need to approve a budget at that time, it has to be more than just rough numbers. You would have to actually work it through the budget and have two, two versions.
That is working through the budget, ma'am.
No, I, I mean, maybe that's adequate to make the decision on it. Do we already, in that, in that case, you already have what you need?
When, the way that this is created, once I've changed that number, I mean, it's changed everything in the budget. So the budget is actually changed.
I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm asking, if, if we get here, if we come back in a week and we say yes to COLA, no to COLA, whichever one we do, will you have what you need to say, okay, here it is, here's the one that has that in it?
Yes.
Okay.
We can compute them both ways.
I can do it both ways and just say that both ways, yes, ma'am.
Then that's the only direction I would know how to give.
Okay. I mean, that's fine. I, I, you know, I have no problem with that.
I would say you might want to include somewhere before you include.
I guess that's true. We don't have to get it full.
The reason that we picked that is because the way our step and grade scales go, they're set at 2.5%. So with this, if we do anything different, we have to completely recreate the whole step and grade scale. I mean, that's the only reason that we chose the 2.5%, because it does use our step and grade scale.
Because we have given lesser amounts in the past.
Mm-hmm. And it does, we do have to, and it's not impossible. I mean, it's something we could do if that's what court chooses, is something in between, but it does change the step and grade scale.
And I hesitate to suggest this with department heads in the room, but another way to approach it is department heads are accepted the way elected officials are accepted. We're not getting a raise, so that it only applies to everybody below the department head level.
Well, the department heads, the department heads require different, different skillset necessarily than.
True, but we're not losing them to competition the way the staff are being lost.
That's true. We don't have, we don't have the exposure with the number of department heads either. Also, the department heads that are here are here because they live here. And, you know, to go somewhere for $5,000 or something like that would not necessarily be worth it for the skeletal.
Right, so the argument for raising the salary isn't there for them. I guess I'm just saying, at, at a times of belt tightening, sometimes the people at the top are the ones that ought to take most of the hit.
I really do. But they were, they were hired for their qualifications. We were hired because of our popularity, to be, to be quite honest with you.
I'm distinguishing between them and their staffs, not between them and us.
No, I understand that. I, I understand that. I understand that. But, but, you know, we had, we, we voted last meeting to, for no raises for depart, for elected officials, okay? So, but department heads are paid employees. I mean, we're paid, and elected officials are paid, but we get paid, you know, we're, we're more contract than we are paid like, like, take the sheriff or, I mean, not sheriff, but his, his staff, you know, what part and his staff are not senior people, you know? You've got, you know, three or four over there. I, I, I hate balancing the budget on the backs of the employees. I really do. I just hate that. And I'd like to do the 2.5 COLA, but if the, and, and if the court decides to do that or any measure thereof, I will definitely support that. But I'm saying with all the, the matches and everything we got from the, the grants and things that are coming up over the next couple of years, you know, we're not getting that money out of the air. That comes out of our fund balance or out of increases in, in, uh, uh, tax rate or anything like that. And, and being stuck with, with a 3.5% max increase before an election, you know, for, for that, to me, is just scary as all get out. And I just think we need to be prepared. But I'll go with whatever it is that the commissioners want to go with and, and be glad to do it. But I just want to put that out there that, you know, we, excuse me, Ms. Russo, we rarely ever not give a COLA. I can't think of about one, one time is the only time I can think of it. But anyway, be that as it may.
I have a question. When I give you these numbers, do you want to just see general fund, or do you want the whole budget again with it? I mean, general fund's the biggest impacted.
Whole budget.
The whole budget. So probably in the next day or two, I will fill your emails up with at least two, maybe three.
Versions. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with Professor Chan to do the job right when you see the total impact of my performance.
We'll do that.
Any further discussion on the budget? All right, we need to approve or disapprove a date and time for 2021 budget public hearing. And you discuss next.
We discussed that last week, but did not take action. This item, we'll just take action to actually set that meeting for the 24th at 8:45 a.m. for the public hearing on the budget.
Jackie, seeing as much as we adopted the new tax revenue rate, we still have to have a public hearing?
On the budget, yes, sir. Only on the budget. We don't have to have one on the, the tax rate.
At 45 a.m., right?
Yes, sir.
You said P.M., right?
Well, I thought I said.
Maybe you did. Maybe I just missed a search.
I've moved to, to.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Approve, disapprove, 2020, 21, environmental health transfer station fees. There are no new, no new charges in the same.
Judge, yeah, I, I forgot when she made that comment, Val said there's no change in the fee structure, so I would make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Approve, disapprove, county judge increasing the petty cash amount in the county clerk's office from $100 to $400.
Move.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Discuss, approve, disapprove, sick leave policy change, amending enrollment period from during open enrollment to the last pay period of the calendar year. Stone or someone want to address that? Kennedy, you want to address that?
Well, that's why you're here.
Yeah, that's why I was here. Okay. Currently, we are having employees enroll into the sick pool membership during our open enrollment time, which is in August. The numbers then are not actually adjusted until January, so we'd like to move the enrollment where it's at the same time. So when employees enroll, they know that they're going to be able to be qualified to be a member, and then we can just take the numbers at the same time.
What is the definition of the last pay period of the calendar year?
Well, it would float each time because, I mean, pay day.
Beginning of that pay period or the end of that pay period?
From the beginning of the pay period until the end of the pay period. They'd have a two-week period that I would send out their notices that they qualify, find out if they want to enroll, get the notices back, and then submit.
My pay period ends after I leave office. I'm just pulling it out. Sure enough.
Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, disapprove, authorize county treasurer to go out for bank depository bids with proposal submission date of September 16th.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded for Mr. Castroline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Budget line item transfers.
We have none.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve, disapprove, account payable, payroll, and payroll liabilities.
There is a payroll that needs approval, but no, no accounts payable.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's this time that any elected official or department head have anything to bring up to the chair. Can you speak now? Have any fees or anything to read?
No, sir, not today.
All right. It's just been brought to my attention that we probably need to go into closed session and talk about contract negotiations that's going on. So.
Should be very, very quick, but something is just.
Won't take long, but need to go into closed session. You have any motions?
Wait, wait. We are, came into open session to give some general instruction to counsel. That's what we were just discussing before we stopped the closed session.
You can. You can.
Just generally, we're going to instruct her to go and negotiate some more with the contract vendor about liability issues that are concerning us.
With that, instructions to the county attorney.
I'll second that motion.
That was in form of a motion.
Yep. Okay.
I don't think it needs to be a motion. I just instructions. All right. But the motion has been made to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.